Good evening, welcome to the Village Board Meeting, Village of Pleasantville. Today is Monday, April 12th, so if you are watching live either on PCTV-76 or on the web, PCTV-76.org, we invite you to call in with questions or comments. The number is 769-1677. Again, if you're watching live Monday, April 12th, 769-1677. We welcome your comments. Our next meeting schedule is a work session on Monday, April 19th at 7:00 PM, a week from today, and then two weeks from today, our next regular meeting, Monday, April 26th at 8:00 PM, with a work session proceeding at 7:00 PM. We've had a work session before this meeting and discussed a number of subjects. One of them is that we recently instituted some parking restrictions on West Cora Avenue in response to neighbors who were concerned about commuter parking having an impact on their residential neighborhood. And we enacted some modest parking restrictions in the West Cora neighborhood in response to those concerns after a series of meetings that the neighborhood was invited to. There are some neighbors now who are concerned about the impact of those changes, and we're anticipating a meeting that we will set up and inform the neighbors of, which will be on Monday, May 3rd. Am I right, Patty? Monday, May 3rd. A little further discussion about the affordable housing settlement that the county entered with the federal government, the Housing and Development Department, and we are, as of the moment, still waiting for the detail on what that all may mean for us, but the short version of a long story is that Pleasantville is one of 20 some odd communities in Westchester that is on the list as a potential site to build a total of 750 units of affordable housing at some point over the next seven years. So, we've commented on that a few times in the past, and we'll comment on it as the process continues, and we understand a little better what it all may mean from the standpoint of the county, what assistance the county might be providing to communities that are able to do it. And in the meantime, we continue to talk to a couple of people who have proposed some interesting or potentially interesting projects here in the Village of Pleasantville, including a project that's been proposed right here behind Lucy's Lounge on the parking lot that wraps around Lucy's Lounge at the corner of Bedford Road and Wheeler Avenue. So, nothing's been decided, nothing is even under detailed discussion, but we welcome anybody's comment as the process moves along. And lastly, we had a conversation with a couple of people, including Libby Brennichols, who went to the trouble of putting together a rather detailed and much appreciated report on the state of the street trees on Wheeler Avenue. We're in the midst of discussing what to do about the fact that we have a lot of these calorie pear trees that have gotten too big for their locations and have shown their brittleness in recent storms, and as a result have started to break off and cause problems. So, those will be matters for continued discussion. Tonight's big event is the discussion about the budget for our fiscal year, which begins on June 1, and Patty Dwyer is poised and ready with her laptop to lead us through that process, but I'll make you stand there just a little longer while I report on a couple of announcements to make. You received notification from the Arbor Day Foundation that Pleasantville, for the 24th consecutive year, has been named a Tree City USA. There are a series of standards that a community has to meet in order to be named a Tree City USA, including tree stewardship program and a planting program, and we have achieved that result and are happy to report that Pleasantville remains a Tree City USA, so...
They may all not be standing anymore, but we used to have them.
That makes Libby's effort a timely one, thinking about the street trees on Wheeler Avenue, and it makes the battle we've had over the last few months and continue to have with Con Edson over their pruning program on the distribution and transmission lines all the more timely and all the more important. Now that we have two competing cable TV providers, Verizon and Cablevision, both offering service to the Village of Pleasantville, we're getting a raft of announcements on channel lineups, and I'll give you just the short version. Hard to imagine that anyone has had Verizon long enough to even notice that this is a change, but for those of you who may have it, on May 19th, a number of packages are going to have some channel lineup arrangement, rearrangements, including a TV Guide channel currently on Channel 48 is going to be moving to Channel 196. Cablevision has a similar report of two rounds of changes, one that takes place effective April 13th, where three channels, Universal HD, Bravo HD, and CNBC HD move to a new channel location, and ESPN Classic on April 28th is repositioned from what was the IO package to the IO Sports package. Customers are supposedly going to be notified through their bills and on-air messages from both of these providers. So, caveat emptor. And then the last thing I wanted to report is that we have two police officers in the Village of Pleasantville who have recently received a high honor from the Policeman's Benevolent Association of Westchester County, and they are Detective Herbie Peterson and Police Officer Jesse Wolman. They have, both those two have received a citation of meritorious service. In addition, Detective Peterson has received an Honorable Service Medal as well. So, those are proud accomplishments for both of those two officers, and they will be honored at an event that will take place on Wednesday, May 12th, run by the PBA of Westchester County. And we congratulate them and appreciate their service that warranted this award. So, any other announcements anybody want to make? My last announcement is, any of you who have been following our meetings recently may have heard that the Pleasantville Farmers Market is going to be rolling itself out at the end, at the beginning of June, in a slightly revised format. We have a new chair of the Farmers Market Committee, Peter Roggivan, and he and his committee members have been working hard on a series of plans, and we're going to be relocating the market so it is arrayed in a U shape on the entire area of the permit parking up near the train overpass, and we'll actually cut a new traffic route so that you'll be able to get through the median somewhere near the gazebo. So, you'll see some physical changes taking place in Memorial Plaza as we roll out this new format, and what it means is that the farm market, I think, will be both a more comfortable and safer place to be, less conflict between pedestrians and shoppers and kids and dogs and cars, and even more importantly, what it means is that the farm market will have additional space to grow, and we expect to have quite a number more vendors this year than we had last year. So, thanks to the Farm Market Committee, to Peter Roggivan, to Tony Emerson, who happens to be here tonight for yeoman service on behalf of the farm market, and to Mindy Barard, who is the godmother of the farm market and will remain so.
The mama.
All right. Patty Dwyer is going to lead us through the budget as it exists in its current form, which would be voted on sometime in the next several weeks. We still have a few more weeks to beat it up a little bit and see if there's some ways in which we can improve it. It is a difficult budget year here, as well as most every other municipality in the community, and thanks go to Patty and to our Finance Department, Mary Shortz, our Treasurer, Pam Hoffman, our Deputy Treasurer, who have been working long hours to try to print money for us, so... Take it away.
It grows on trees the Con Ed cut down, so we have two problems. But thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, members of the board. I do want to acknowledge both Mary and Pam are with us tonight, our Treasurer and Deputy Treasurer, who had recently been reappointed last week, so congratulations, Pam. Glad you're with us another year. And if you fellows want to make yourselves comfortable and maybe dim those lights for me, I will start on the presentation of the preliminary budget for fiscal year 2010, 2011. I think you need to shut the front one.
There we go.
Oh, that's, how's that, Shane? You all right?
I'm good.
Okay. And as the mayor mentioned, it's, this comes around at this time of year. We are required by law to hold a public hearing no later than April 15th, and we take the time that we need to try to come up with what we consider to be a very accurate picture of where our fiscal year will be at the end of the current year and also the start of the ensuing year. So, here we are on April 12th, having our public hearing on the tentative budget, which has been worked on not only by the staff since mid-January, but the Board of Trustees, as late as last Thursday, we had a special meeting to try to bring this into better The village's budget consists of several different operating funds. The general fund is the fund that supports the majority of our municipal services, everything from general administration to police and public works, recreation and parks, and all the ancillary support for buildings and grounds and benefits and insurance and the like. What I did in this particular budget year is show, try to show the development of this fund and the other funds in a comparative form from the current year to what we believe will be the requirements for fiscal year 2010 and 2011. And as you could see with respect to the general fund, just as an overview, we are looking at an appropriations increase in excess of $500,000. And I'll go through with at least an overview of where this money's going, and we do have a detailed budget posted online as well, so people can see the line items. But in order to support a $12,760,177 appropriations plan, we are looking at a tax levy in excess of $9 million, use of surplus funds, which is fund balance, of about $300,000. And that number is a deliberate number chosen by the Board for reasons that I'll talk about later on, but essentially to preserve our fund balance, to make sure that we are in a good financial position, not only this year, but in ensuing years as well. And the other revenue that comes in to support the plan comes from everything from operating permits, operating fees, program revenues, sales tax, and other related taxes and charges. And what we're looking at here is a projected tax rate increase on this preliminary budget of 7.36% over the current year. Just for illustrative purposes, I charted this, I tried to make a pie at the request of one of my trustees, but I had a horrible time with my PowerPoint. So, just to show you in illustrative form, the major categories of expense in the general fund are broken out in according, according to certain chart of accounts, governmental support, public safety, public works, community services, recreation, senior outreach, benefits and debt service. I'll go through each one of those to show you what they entail in terms of category of expense, but this illustrates where a substantial amount of the appropriations go to by function, public safety being the greatest expense, benefits being second, and pretty much equal our government support, public works, recreation and debt service. Government support, which is about 11% of our budget, consists of all of the appropriations necessary for the operation of this government, including spending and appropriations necessary for the operation of the Board of Trustees, the Justice Court, administrative services, financial services, something called retained services, which are basically professional services such as auditing our legal expenses, consulting engineers, and that type of retained service. Information technology, which over the years has also been a very expensive component of operations, insurance and small claims, insurance being general liability insurance for the entire village, and money appropriated for claims for, as I said, minor things or perhaps even surchargeary tax claims. And then contingency goes into this part of the budget. You'll see that in the current year, we appropriated 1.5 million. The proposed budget for next year is 1.3 million and change. The reason there's a decrease in basic governmental support is basically twofold. We are appropriating less money in contingency this year. Last year, we had to estimate retroactive raises for the Police Benevolent Association because their contract was expired, so some of that money was placed in contingency. And you'll see in the subsequent slide how it basically transferred over to the police budget. And also, we made a policy decision not to budget for surchargearies directly in the general fund last year. We were going to charge any of those settlements and claims to our fund balance, which we've been doing throughout the year. So, you'll see the difference in the next slide here. Public safety, which includes not only police services but also code enforcement, comprises 27% of the budget. You can see the increase in expenses from 3.1 million to 3.4 million and change. Again, this category of expense deals with police administration, all of the divisions, including crossing guards, parking enforcement, and all operations and maintenance expenses related to the department. It also includes code enforcement, Mike Testa's expenses for buildings and codes, and some of the expenses associated with our code enforcement program that are split between the general fund, excuse me, and the refuse fund. Public works is a category of expenses, about 13% of the budget. People are very familiar with the types of expenses that are incurred with these operations, road maintenance, snow removal, and the like. We've seen some increases in basically streetlights, and again, some expenses with energy costs, but overall, you can see the proposed budget has a very small increase from the current year's budget. We're looking at less than 20, what is it, $28,000 of increased expenses. Outreach services consist of that component of the budget that is committed to senior outreach, senior transportation programs, the Clinton Street Center, and our nutrition program. Again, this budget is fairly stable. It is going to rise just under $10,000 from the current year to the proposed budget, about $454,000 in appropriations to support our programs down at Clinton Street. Recreation consists of about 11% of the budget. Included in here is our contribution for our share of support for the Mount Pleasant Library System, which is, as everybody knows, an excellent investment and also an excellent resource for Pleasantville. The cost of recreation administration, which does not involve the parks or the playgrounds, those are charged under public works, is $1,454,335 in the proposed budget, up slightly from, again, from the current year. Community services is that portion of the budget that deals with some of the overhead involved in governmental administration, things associated with the planning board, zoning board, architectural review board, farmers market, community television, and for some reason, the state also categorizes things like street cleaning and tree planting and leaf removal and storm sewer maintenance in this area of our budget. So, we're looking at a slight increase from the current year for these service-related functions. The proposed budget is $308,900, about 2.5% of the entire appropriations plan. Employee benefits, as simple as it sounds, it's all the fringes that are required of the employer that are obligated to the employees and retirees. These are contributions to pension systems run by the state of New York, federal social security and Medicare, wage obligations, workers' compensation insurance, and medical insurance, which is basically the health and dental plans that are obligated under contract to municipal employees. You see a considerable increase in expense here due primarily to the pension systems requiring additional funding. That is not news, I think everybody's heard that, and that story unfortunately is not getting any better. Debt payments and transfers out, about 11% of the budget. This is an area of the budget where we have to appropriate money to pay off bonds and other types of debt instruments if we had obligations taken out for capital projects. We are seeing a decrease this year in debt service as a consequence of paying down some of our obligations, but we're at 11% of total budget, which is fairly, I think that's fairly reasonable. We are going to be paying 1.3 million, almost 1.4 million this year, in debt service payments. Okay, you know, and obviously, the money needs to come from someplace, and we're looking at the distribution of the tax dollars coming in from the following sources. Almost 72% of the revenue required for this budget comes from property taxes. The balance comes from other fees and charges, other taxes, which are pass-through taxes such as sales tax and mortgage tax that come from different entities, and even gross receipts tax that come from the operation of telephones and electrical services and the like. We are appropriating some surplus, and we, again, barely rely on state and federal aid, which is a very good position to be in. Our second fund that involves tax levies is the refuse fund. Again, we provide sanitation services for residential properties only. It's a full-service department with household trash recycling, bulk items and brush and yard waste being removed. We are going to see an escalation in cost in this, again, simply for the fringes and the healthcare and pension contributions. The operating expenses have risen slightly in accordance with the CSEA contract that's in effect for this year, but the bottom line is a rate increase of 4.79%. This is how it breaks down. For a single-family home, the current annual payment is $369.42, it'll be going to $387. And there are multipliers on the two and three-family rates, according to the village The water fund, our third fund, which is actually our second-largest, is a fund that's supported by water rent, charges that are collected from consumers in the village as well as outside the village. Our current water budget is $3,266,712. We expect next year's budget to actually decrease slightly to $3,140,277. We had risen, we had a rate increase last November that we put into effect, and we discussed being able to keep that rate steady for the next few billing cycles. Even though our budget is, our appropriations plan is less than last year's plan, we are seeing some shortfalls in revenue, simply because this is a consumption-based budget, and if people aren't using water, there's very little way to support a fixed expense and a fixed operating budget. So, we're, let me just go back to that. We're talking about this year raising the quarterly ready-to-serve charges, about $5 per quarter. Right now, they range from about $35. Most accounts have a $35 per quarter bill for their ready-to-serve charges. If the Board does implement a rate increase, those bills will go to $40 a quarter. That money will be used to help support debt service and to help stabilize the financial condition of the water fund. Very small fund, the pool fund, but it's separated so the village can rely on both permit sales and other revenues from operations to support at least the operating expenses of that pool fund. Some of the capital expenses are supported by the general fund, but we're looking at a budget, again, that's going to decrease from $293,789 to $274,619.
I kid you, you can join the Pleasantville swim team. Have a nice swim.
That's one of those, people have those types of, they have those pools in their houses, the ones that don't go anywhere. I like that, and it's, I've seen those.
That's a beautiful place.
It's actually getting, no, it's not sinking, that's a good sign. Just don't want them to sink. Mindy doesn't like this job, that's great. Let me go back and, here we go. One of the areas of concern that we've been focused on is getting a handle on where we should be looking at the village's financial condition from a perspective of fund balance and how much cash is available on hand as unreserved and undesignated money in the event that we have unforeseen expenses, emergencies, or the need to go out to the bond market and present ourselves as a stable financial condition. And we are working on coming up with some fund balance policies, but it was very clear, and I think we've come to an understanding, that the goal for this year's budget was to preserve fund balance to the extent practical without having a substantial impact on the tax rate. And to get to that point, as I said, we made a conscientious decision to appropriate only $300,000 in this budget to help stabilize the tax impacts, which were inevitable given the requirements we had to meet for both healthcare expenses and pension contributions, as well as the obligations we have under contract with our unions right now. So, we knew we were having tax rate increases this year, the extent of which could be buffered by, you know, infusion of cash, but we've seen, and we're learning from mistakes that we believe other communities have made about reducing and decimating their fund balances to a point where they really know that they are going to be in trouble in subsequent fiscal years. We think this leaves us in a very good position to deal with what's still a very uncertain economic environment, and with the plan that's presented, the general fund would have an undesignedated fund balance of over 20% available as undesignedated, unreserved cash. The refuse fund would be in a position of seeing a fund balance of about 14.5%. We would like to get it to 15%, but the plan is calling now for just, close enough to 15% of appropriations available at the end of, well, at the beginning of the next fiscal year. I should change those numbers, I'm sorry. That should be the end of fiscal year. So, here's where we run into some problems. We, yeah, it's the same thing as the start of June 1. Now, here's where we run into some concerns, I should say. The water fund undesignedated fund balance at the end of our current fiscal year will only be about 4% of the appropriations plan. That $126,000 is not enough money, in my opinion, to rely on in a fund that doesn't have a guaranteed revenue stream but does rely on consumption and other types of motivations for people to consume water and to spend money on water rents. So, we've talked as well about a policy with respect to the water fund to try to restore this fund balance to a healthier position, and as a consequence of those discussions, we were leaning toward raising those ready-to-serve charges, which will generate about $100,000 a year in and of themselves. The pool fund has a very small fund balance, it's not a concern, I mean, simply because that fund is also supported by the general fund if need be, but also because there really is not a lot of residual activity for the water fund to be concerned about. It's only in operation a few months out of the year, and we've seen this number fluctuate on occasion, but it's, I put it here for illustration, just to keep everything in perspective. Going forward, our concerns and our issues really boil down to a few things going on in the current environment. Interest rates in particular are both a blessing and a curse, a curse because we're not earning any money on our money, but a blessing because if we are looking to do capital planning, it's a good time to make some investments. The market is... The market is favorable to long-term borrowing, and, you know, we need to focus on how to take advantage of some opportunities like that. We're still looking at significant erosion of the fund balance from recent certiori settlements and proposed settlements that are occurring. When this budget was first presented back in March, our tentative taxable assessed valuation was over $115 million, and our preliminary, our tentative budget was based on that number. Consequently, only one month after, or several weeks thereafter, we lost over $2 million in assessed valuation, which in and of itself raised the tax rate about 2.8 percent. So, we needed to confront what we know are going to be inevitable tax certiori impacts. We did talk, at least amongst ourselves, about how to treat some of these payments going forward, and our budget going forward in the next fiscal year assumes that we are going to be able to support, we're going to be able to absorb the impact through either fund balance appropriation or some short-term borrowing. But our operating budget and our fund balance, as presented, will not be affected by the certiori settlements that are pending. The pension and healthcare obligations, again, we had the preliminary budget in place, but we just got noticed by the New York State's insurance plan, or the Empire Plan, which people may be reading about, that our rates in January of 2011 will escalate anywhere from 13 percent to 17 percent. We did not plan for that. We estimated a 6 percent increase in our tentative budget, so we had to make some adjustments, and we've made those adjustments. The state pension system is still projecting, if not the same, some increased rates and contribution rates for the next fiscal year. We won't know that, though, until the end of this calendar year, what their projections are for 2011 and '12. But, as I said, we've taken great pains this year to sit down and talk about putting some fiscal policies on paper and in place with respect to the operating budget, and in an effort to make sure that we do have some guidelines, such as a fund balance policy, a policy about when to borrow and why we would borrow money, when to initiate some capital planning. And the board has asked for those. We have them, and we are working on them collectively. We also are working on a five-year capital plan, just to give, from an illustrative point of view, what we think are going to be some expenses coming up that can be considered mandatory, and others that can be considered necessary from a point of view of maintenance or just general operations. So, I think that's going to summarize, yeah, that's going to summarize this presentation. Again, this is a public hearing. Thanks, Mayor, if you could hit the lights. We are hoping to get comments on this appropriations plan. I do have it on the village's website, and I will have this shorter version on the website as well for people who don't want to go through the line item detail, but line item details for all of these categories are available on our website. And I'd be happy to take any questions from anybody in the audience, or if the board has any questions, or please feel free to fill in any detail that you think was important to mention and I may have forgotten.
Again, let me remind you that if you are watching at home and would like to call in, you're welcome to do so, the number 769-1677.
Great job, Patty.
Yes, thank you very much, Patty.
Well, my pleasure.
For a very clear explication of a little bit of a grim story, and thank you, Mary and Pam, again, for all of your work on this. So, just to recap, this draft budget can still be pushed around a bit, and may be pushed around a bit over the next several weeks. It needs to be adopted by the end of this month, but it proposes a tax rate increase of 7.36 percent. That's a higher number than we want, and that's a higher number than we've seen in quite some years, but for the reasons Patty, I think, described so clearly. We have, after some years of a perfect storm of positive forces, with revenues like sales tax revenue and mortgage recording tax coming in higher than anticipated, we're now in an environment where all of those revenues are coming in lower than anticipated, and at the same time, we are being hammered by increased costs, particularly in the area of pension and healthcare costs, and the decline in the money-producing value of the cash we have on hand. So, we are confronting a circumstance similar to what you can read in the paper going on in every other community. But as Patty also mentioned, we've been thinking quite a bit about the question of how much money we need in the piggy bank, so to speak, and there are a number of different ways to think about the money we have in the piggy bank. First off, we need a certain amount of money for unexpected expenses and just to manage the cash flow in the course of the year. But as Patty also indicated, the amount of buffer, the cushion that we have in the form of cash in the bank, is a contributing factor to the bond rating that we receive from the various rating organizations, and that affects what we pay for both short and long-term debt, and those are matters of special concern. And indeed, it would appear that some of those bond rating organizations are taking a more conservative view that is expecting a bigger fund balance as a percentage of our total operating budget than they expected in some years past, given the volatility of the economy at the moment. Patty and Mary and Pam have spun out, in the course of our discussions, a what-if-five-year look-ahead budget. And if conditions continue the way they are right now, that what-if-five-year look-ahead budget is a bit of a train wreck. And I say that both in the category of full disclosure, but also in the category of, I think you've got a group of people, both here on the professional staff as well as on the board, who are thinking about what the village staff chart may look like, what the village services may look like, what our opportunities are over the next several years, to rethink some of the things that we do and the way we do some of them. As all of you have heard who have been watching these meetings, we continue to be engaged in discussion about the sanitation department, and have been looking at ways in which we could save money, including the possibility of outsourcing sanitation to a private firm. We've also been talking to CSEA, which is the union that represents our non-uniformed employees, including the sanitation department, about some work rule changes. It happens that there's a longstanding arrangement in the sanitation department that the guys who work there don't work a full day. They leave when the job is done, and in some cases, the job is done quite early. And so, that also is an area where we think there may be some opportunities to make all of the tax dollars we collect from all of you go farther, especially in an environment that's as difficult as the one we have right now. So, those are circumstances we're trying to address proactively, and I'm optimistic that we'll be successful in doing that. But I add to that the thought that the fund balance Patty talked about is a very nice cushion against difficult times, and one that we are being very careful not to raid unnecessarily. There are a bunch of communities quite a bit larger than ours that are currently at historic lows in their fund balance, and indeed, I would say, there are a number of our neighboring communities that have a fund balance at this point. That means that unless the economy brightens in terms of the revenue picture next year, they are going to be looking at a rather bleak circumstance. So, I think we can report with some satisfaction that this village will not be looking at anywhere near that kind of risk, but it's also fair to say that as we go down the road here, not only in this fiscal year, but in the years to come, there are going to be some pretty serious challenges to fight. So, anybody else?
Well said.
Yeah, I think it would be helpful, because I think this is the first year in seven years that we've confronted the issue of certioris having such a major impact. And I think it's good to have some clarification. The $2.5 million proposed fund does not, my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, does not include any of the effects of certioris that we may have to pay. Is that correct?
Well, we've already appropriated certiori settlement money for the Commons, 140 Bedford Road, Savone Realty, MSPVIL, PMS Assets, about $75,000 worth have been included in the projections for the current year, and also authorized to be paid out of fund balance before the end of this fiscal year are Pleasantville Country Club, DS Pleasantville, 44 Bedford Road, that's another $185,000. So, we've taken that hit and still came up with about a 20 percent undesignedated, unreserved as a result of operations this year. What is not included in the fund balance appropriation is any proposed settlement for Foxwoods certioris, which we know are going to be very large. And we talked about how to treat that, and although we've not concluded that we should take out a bond anticipation note, at least for the first payment, because we're trying to negotiate paying this out over time and not at once. The fund balance that we're talking about being available as of June 1, it's not artificial, but it also is, it'll be impacted by that certiori that'll be settled after June 1.
But part of that 2.2 percent increase in taxes was from the lower assessment.
Going forward, yes. We did lower the assessment roll to address the potential impact of the Foxwoods certiori. I mean, I had a choice whether or not to present a tentative budget based on the tentative roll, which was produced back on February 2.
Right.
Or on the roll that we know is going to be the final roll after, you know, all is said and done with respect to a settlement, and we're losing over $2 million in assessed valuation. So, I've accounted for that. It did escalate the tax rate, but we're in a difficult window. We know the window is closing on this settlement.
The taxes are going up, and there's not, you have to account for it.
But to Trustee Cunningham's point, you know, since we're still negotiating that settlement, I don't want to talk in terms of, you know, the numbers.
No.
But it's large, it's not reflected in our fund balance right now, but it can be, depending on how the board wants to treat the payment. We can either fund it out of fund balance, as we have it available, or we can finance it over time, which is, you know, actually recommended by our bond counsel to do.
The other question I had has to do with the water fund. And again, you, the appropriations are down, yet we are, it might be worthy of just diving into it just a little bit for greater clarity why, even though we've cut the costs on that to a certain degree, or at least the amount of appropriations, we may need to raise rates, or ready-to-serve rates.
Combination of things are happening with that fund. Our fixed expenses are escalating at a rate greater than our revenue has escalated over time. So, we've lowered the gap. We've appropriated more fund balance year after year to try to keep that budget in balance. Our revenues were impacted, let's say probably off about 10 percent in the current year from what we expected. We were seeing a picture similar to what we saw in 2006 and 2007 from a revenue perspective, and it's certainly weather-related. We had a very wet spring last year. If you remember, June was wet almost every day, except, I think, two days in the end of the month. I know we were panicking with the music festival coming, that every weekend was soaking wet, I think, six weekends before that. So, you know, it's a very volatile revenue stream to begin with, but to your point, you know, the expenses have increased. There's always been a fund balance appropriation to try to keep that, to keep those rates low. We're at the point now of not having that money available to appropriate, so we need to do one of two things, which is either reduce expenses, which we were able to do a little bit this year, and also find a source of revenue that would be guaranteed and not based on, you know, a water rent.
We tried to, I mean, that fund has seen some, not only serious increases in its fixed costs, but also serious increases in its, I mean, ridiculous, almost, some might say ridiculous, increases in its variable costs as directed by the City of New York in terms of raw water costs.
Well, that's, yeah. Yeah, thank you.
Have been up, you know, close to 20 percent.
Right. Most people don't realize, I forget to mention that. We don't have a water source, you know, our, thank you, Shane. Our water comes from New York City. We buy it from New York City in raw water quality, and then we treat it at the Millwood Plant, and it's a very expensive process to treat it, but the bottom line is, the city charges us for water that is not potable, and we have to, you know, do what we have to do to meet the parameters for safe water drinking after that, and the city's water rates have gone up considerable, considerably, and our costs to produce have gone up considerably.
In the short version of a very long story is that we're fortunate throughout Westchester that we're able to piggyback on the far-sighted vision of the New York City water supply system that dates back to the 19th century, with Aqueducts bringing water from the Catskill and Croton reservoirs through Westchester, and for the most part, our water that comes through the Millwood filtration plant, of which we're a part-owner, comes from the, primarily from the Croton reservoir system, a little bit from the Catskill system, depending on what goes on. But New York City, for economic reasons of their own in the last few years, has dramatically increased the cost of the raw water that we buy, and so that has had a significant impact on all of us. And as Jonathan and Patty indicated, expensive though it is, it may very well be that our water rates have not kept pace with it, and that fund, as a result, is limping a little bit and needs to be given some nutrition, so.
You know, I remember, Patty, maybe you remember this as well, but years ago, the state comptroller reviewed the water fund, reviewed the village, and one of the comments that he made, and I know Bernie was there, and Bernie sort of talked about this, but, you know, his idea was that we should possibly consider privatizing some of it, selling water that comes out of it, since it is so pure. I mean, in some regard, you can almost say that water is, you know, it exceeds the standards by quite some distance, and I know that some commercial firms have approached, isn't that correct?
I don't know recently, but I think.
At least at one point, they did, and I think we denied them because it wasn't that, we thought we'd make more money from pace, from selling water outside. But I'm just wondering if we aren't getting to the point here where, with the increases of water costs by New York City, and just, and the lowering of consumption here, that we might consider rethinking, you know, a private, public-private partnership with somebody who might want to buy water from us. I mean, Bernie always talked about this, and I always thought it was a good idea. We always took it as sort of a joke, and yet the state comptroller suggested this to us, you know, several years ago, and I'm thinking, maybe we should take that seriously.
Bottled water, you mean?
Well, you know, if the Coca-Cola company wants to come in and, you know, or whatever, you know, a pure water company wants to come in, yeah, and build a facility, or somehow obtain that water as it comes out of our plant, why not? I mean, the price of water, the cost of water here is just going way up, and I think we have to think about things like that in this kind of economy.
Well, the one circumstance we confront, and I don't know how it would play out in a scenario like that, is that the water we buy from New York City and then the cost of filtering it itself means that water in Westchester County costs a whole heck of a lot more money than water in some other places in the world.
However, it does not cost as much as Poland Springs, the bottom of Poland Springs, as some officials around this committee have suggested it does. It's complete fallacy. It's fractions of pennies.
Actually, that statement wasn't true.
Well, you're paying about $53 for 7,000 gallons. Is that right?
I mean, what you need to realize also, what.
Seventy-five hundred gallons.
What residents need to realize, and those who are served by our water system, is that the cost of the water incorporates not only the water itself and the filtration plant, but also the people and the pipes and the equipment that get that water into your house. So, that involves an awful lot of work going on, and people don't necessarily realize that there's an ongoing testing process with samples being drawn at various locations at various times. at various times and sent to labs.
Can I have Captain Lawrence bottle it? Can I have Captain Lawrence Pleasantville water?
They already are, except that they've added some ingredients.
Along those major uptick.
Oh, no, I agree with both of them.
It's not a bad idea. I mean, we can laugh about it, but I think, you know, the times are changing economically. I think we need to think about things like that.
I just want to ask, well, I have Mr. Johnson who's here tonight. Is Captain Lawrence on Thonwood Water or Arrow Water?
Village Water.
They are? Okay.
Captain Lawrence is on Village Water.
Yes.
And you can take from that what you will.
That's why that beer is so good.
Liquid gold, it gives a new definition of that beer. Patty, one last comment or question or clarification, however you want to, whatever category you want to put it in. Public Safety shows that budget, you gave an explanation as to why government support, which is 11% of the budget, actually dropped due to contingencies. However, one might look at the Public Safety and see a 10% increase there. I think that warrants a bit more explanation.
Yeah, certainly that...
Because I don't think it's gone up 10%, has it?
Well, then, yeah, the number is what it is. It's gone up because of two years of retroactive raises as well as current year.
There's a couple of years of other stuff built into that.
That's right. Which were hidden in the prior year's budgets under contingency and some, somebody's fallen into fund balance too. But, yeah, I think that's as simple as I can make it. There's some changes in personnel anticipated, but those changes actually will be saving us some money, despite the fact that there are increases in costs overall.
I know that there's been some desired visibility on that. I just wanted to make sure that, on those numbers, I just want to make sure that the public were aware of...
Yeah, it's easy to say that the current budget that's presented there was artificially low. Some of that money was hidden in...
Budgeted.
The current budget in other places. And then, once we made the PBA settlement, we moved it back, and you see the impact in next year's budget, what that would be. So it's not really fair to say that they went up so much. They really did not. The money was available in other areas of the budget.
Patty, there are quite a few people new to Pleasantville who live here now, and just to remind people who are tuning in, what percentage of people's total tax bill goes to the village?
Well, we were looking at the effective tax rate. I would say 30, I think we're looking at 30%.
72% is school.
Well, 72%.
Yeah, I think it's 72%.
Well, it's going to vary depending on your specific assessment.
I don't really know what...
Every homeowner in the village of Pleasantville has two different assessments.
It's 25 to 30% of a total bill, a total obligation. The balance is school, county, town, special, well, there's no special district here.
Well, the ambulance and fire and all that sort of thing.
In your town tax, yeah.
You know, for those who may not have paid that much attention to it or may be new to this, you have two different assessments on your home if you live in the village of Pleasantville. You have an assessment that is your assessment from the village of Pleasantville, and that's the assessment that is used to determine your village taxes. And then the town of Mount Pleasant applies an assessment to your property, and it's the town assessment that is used to derive your school, county, and district taxes. So if you are looking at your assessments, you need to look at both of them, and it's the town assessment that drives the bigger number because, as Patty just mentioned, for the typical homeowner, your village taxes typically are in the quarter to a third of your total tax bill range, so. Well, as we go forward with this over the next several weeks, we encourage anybody who has comments on this to let us know in whatever form you want, an email, a call, a visit to a work session. We'll be here next week as well, working on this. As Patty mentioned, the draft budget is up on the web in PDF form at pleasantville-ny.gov. And so for those of you who are interested in going through all or part of it on a line-by-line basis, all the detail that you might want is there and available to you. And if anybody is unable to access it in that way but would like to have a copy, just let us know here at Village Hall, and we can make arrangements on your behalf. But I do think for most people, that PDF on the web is going to be the easiest way to do it, and I think there's a link right on the front page to it.
There is, yes.
So we encourage you to take a look at that as we continue to work our way through this. But I just wanted to circle back to the point Jonathan had made, which is an important one for people to realize, and that is that in the end, when we determine how much money has to be raised through taxes, it is apportioned across all the taxpayers in the village of Pleasantville based on your assessment. And so when there are tax challenges in the form of tax grievances and a property owner achieves a lower assessment, that means that that property owner pays less that year and in all the years going forward, and that everybody else has to pay a little more in order to make up the gap. So I don't say that to encourage or discourage tax challenges. I say that simply for people to realize that in an environment such as the one we're in right now, where we fully understand that lots of people are looking after their dollars as carefully as they can for any number of reasons in the current economy, we are also confronting a lot more tax challenges. So the result of that is that in that five-year look ahead that I referred to, we're anticipating that even with some development in the village, which we fervently hope we'll be able to get going, it will take quite a bit of development simply to get back to where we were as these various tax challenges chip away in small ways at the tax base. So that continues to be a risk we confront, given the tax challenges that have been successful so far. Even if we didn't spend another dime year to year, everybody's taxes would go up. So we're up against a series of forces that are compounding one another to create some difficulties, and although nobody is happy with the tax increase at all, let alone one that at the moment is at 7.36%, I do think that, as I hope we've been able to communicate to you tonight, you've got a board and a staff that are very much focused on not only how to do the best job now, but how to position this village to be stable in what we hope will be brighter years to come.
That's very well said. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just, again, want to thank our village treasurer, Mary Schwartz, and our deputy treasurer, Pam Hoffman, for helping me get through the last two and a half months with all these variations. And I'm sure by tomorrow, there'll be another thing to talk about with respect to the village's budget. But thank you for being the Department of Factual Verification and keeping everything in order for me.
D F V, we'll call you.
That's right. It's from that great book, Bright Lights, Big City. There it is. Thank you. And I thank the board as well for your patience in this process. It wasn't easy.
And so far, nobody has yet suggested that we institute a lottery or sell our infrastructure to a private authority, so. All right. Thank you all. There was one more announcement that I intended to make and forgot, and that is that we did have a bit of happy news on the stimulus funding front. Almost everything we've had to say about stimulus funding so far has been to report to you that we've been in line just like everybody else, and our number has not gotten drawn. We did get a little bit of good news, and that is that through the assistance of Tom Riley, who's a village resident and involved with a company called Ross Solar, we put together a pretty detailed presentation and application to the New York State Energy Research and Development Authority, which is called NYSERTA, and got the happy news last week that we've received a grant of about a quarter million dollars to put a solar panel system on the roof of the DPW department. And so that's a happy bit of news where we can look forward to generating some solar power down at DPW and turning Steve Johnson's area down there into a bit of a prototype for a green operation in public works. So we thank NYSERTA for that. We thank our elected officials at higher levels who may have played a role in supporting that. And we also thank Tom Riley, who was extremely helpful to us in putting that all together. So good news on that front. I think we're ready to go to our resolutions. Steve, number 74.
Resolve that pre-check registered dated April 12, 2010, covering check number 66029, 66031 through 66195. It's been reviewed and is hereby approved as listed below. General Fund, $202,020.20. Miscellaneous Fund, $427.59. Water Fund, $6,196.09. Capital Fund, $2,607.41. Refuge Fund, $4,714.88. Pool Fund, $175. Trust and Agency Fund, $980, for a total of $217,121.15.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees has reviewed the minutes of the meetings held on March 22, 2010, and April 5, and they are hereby approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments or corrections?
On the minutes from March 29, it's just a little thing. Page three, they're incompatible specs, species, they should be, right?
It's worth noting, and Patty already referred to it, that how fast the world can change, the minutes of our meeting of March 22. Patty described the tentative budget as it looked right then at a tax rate increase of 4.73%. We're now up to 7.3% driven by dark news, particularly from our health care costs after January 1 and from some continuing erosion of the tax base, so. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved.
John, 76.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees, the village of Pleasantville, approves the appointment of Emmanuel Nunez Zaro and Elia Garrison as school crossing guards at a salary of $20.61 per hour on an as-needed basis.
Is there a second?
Second.
Patty, am I correct that these are our court officers?
Yeah, you know, Mayor, we talked during the budget work session, how to save some money because the police department's been assigned police officers to fill in when crossing guards are available or when they call in sick. And we've also used our parking enforcement officers, which takes away that, you know, work. So our two court officers are available on occasion to come and fill in for their rate of pay that we pay the crossing guards, so it would save us a lot of money.
I was wondering why there's no backup on them.
Oh, they've been here, yeah. They're already employed, yeah.
Okay, that's fine.
But for the county's civil service purposes, we haven't filled through the motions.
No, it's a great thing, and it's always, it's been an ongoing problem that we've had a hard time developing a back bench, so to speak, for crossing guards.
And we're always looking, if people are interested in being on a standby list for school crossing guards, we could use the help.
Pay students. Yeah, and now that there's questions about additional crossing guards, this is, these will not become additional positions.
Not additional posts, no. Thank you for clarifying that.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. Number 77, Brian.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees, the village of Pleasantville, hereby approves the request from the Pleasantville International Association to use the gazebo on Sunday, June 6, 2010, from noon until 2:00 p.m. for ticket sales in conjunction with her annual PIA house tour.
Is there a second?
Second.
Happy to make this available to them, and for those who may not know exactly what the Pleasantville International Association is, it's a group associated with the high school that helps raise money to send high school students on exchange programs, typically in the summer after their sophomore or junior years, occasionally during the school year itself. And they run a number of fundraising programs, including most years, a housing garden tour that this year will be on Sunday, June 6, and we encourage people to support PIA and the kids who represent Pleasantville in foreign countries as a result. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. Steve, 78.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees, the village of Pleasantville, hereby approves the request from the Community Scholarship Fund to use the gazebo on Saturday, May 15 to register for their 5K walk-run for education.
Village Hall.
Is there a second?
Second.
Same story, Saturday, May 15 is Pleasantville date, and the Community Scholarship Fund, as they have done in the past, is sponsoring both a fun run that begins at 8:30 p.m. as well as a race that begins at 9:00 a.m. So they're two different things going on, and anybody who's interested in getting more detail on it, I'm sure can get it from the Community Scholarship Fund. I don't know if it's available on the web, but the Community Scholarship Fund also has an information. Oh, yes, it is available on the web. You can call 769-6473, and you can go to www.pvilcsf, that's P-V-I-L-L-E-C-S-F.com.
Oh, no. When would we be voting on the budget? Is it April 26 or May?
You haven't, you must adopt it by May 1st, so if we can get it done at our last meeting of the month, is it 26?
26, yeah.
Right.
Okay, so is that when we're going to vote on it?
April 26.
All right, now I have no idea how to get this person back.
Well, they're watching TV presumably, so they would have...
No, I don't think they are.
It's been here again, I think.
Do I have you still? Yes, I was correct. April 26. You're welcome. Bye-bye. No, she has no idea that we're on television, but I'm sorry.
It was worth taking the call, and it's worth reminding people that...
How did she know we were here?
As Minnie just mentioned to that caller, and as Patty indicated, we have to vote on the budget by state law before May 1 or by May 1, and we anticipate that we'll be working on it for the next two weeks, and we'll vote on it at our next regular session, which is April 26. Okay, so back to the Pleasantville 5K walk-run for education. Did we have a second?
Yes, we did.
Yes, we did. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. Number 79.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees, the village of Pleasantville, based upon the recommendation of the police chief, hereby approves Samantha Mimola for an unpaid internship with the police department, Pleasantville Police Department, beginning in the summer of 2010.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Samantha Mimola, for offering to do this. Our police chief, Tony Charlitti, is an adjunct professor at Pace, and as a result, is in contact with lots of students in the criminal justice program there, and we have had a continuing flow of free and very useful assistance from Pace University, which has been not only a benefit to the department, but forged a strong relationship with the village and Pace, in addition to the many other realms in which we cooperate, so.
And this young lady was really on the ball because apparently the chief mentioned in a story he was telling the kids about my intern, she said, "Ooh, job." Wrote a letter, so.
All right. All in favor?
Aye. Aye. Motion approved.
That being our last resolution, did anybody else have any further comment or question? Announcement? Motion to adjourn.
So.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your attention. Encourage you to look through the village budget on the web or to watch a reprise of Patty's presentation when it's up on PCTV76.org. You'll be able to bring it up on on-demand video, and are happy to engage any comments or questions on the budget between now and two weeks from now when we need to vote on it. So thank you all. Appreciate it. Good night.